This is the same visual metaphor that Einstein used to describe a black hole. Like we often call Bitcoin the economic singularity. It's this, literally this.
Bitcoin as power projection is a energy based competition that doesn't leave bodies on the ground. You don't have tanks rolling, you don't have bombs dropping. So we move from hard war to soft war.
And this is like the profound thing about Bitcoin is it has somehow imported the integrity of the laws of physics into this social domain.
And so it gives me an opportunity to defend my own liberty from those that would take it, including and especially my own government.
He thinks it will change the idea of national defense because it's going to change the idea of nation.
Not having to waste human life to defend monetized wealth is worth every watt.
Bitcoin does not need to be recognized. It will recognize itself. It will stand on the pedestal and proclaim its dominance.
The game theory playing out around nation state Bitcoin adoption. Is this the tipping point? Where are we in this game?
Lowry tells an evolutionary story that really unifies physical power and abstract power. So it's all in the thesis and it's all intertwined, as you mentioned. And so how he gets there is intelligence is an evolved capacity, of course. It evolves as a power projection technique. It's a way our brains physically consume energy watts. And in that way, we can develop in conjunction with our physical capacities, new ways to hunt prey. The way we do this is through our abstract thinking capacities. And Lowry in his thesis has eight to 12, something like that, different modalities of abstract thinking from things like theory of mind, storytelling, syntactically and semantically complex languages, imagination, the ability to construct patterns, all these different superpowers that we develop by virtue of an evolving intelligence, give us this really incredible power to think abstractly, which is a power projection technique. Through abstract thinking, we can run simulations in our mind and kind of envision how we might hunt a mammoth without going out and dying doing it. And then we can use our semantically and syntactically complex language to tell other people how to do that in coordination with us, that we thought of this way to hunt the mammoth. And then we can go do that together, coordinate. And that makes us the apex predator, this ability to think abstractly. What it also does is humans are pack animals. That's another part of the evolutionary story that Lowry tells. And as pack animals, you not only need a way to obtain resources from the world, get the meat, you then need a way to determine resource allocation within the pack. And so this gets us to physical power based hierarchies versus abstract power based hierarchies. Humans develop the ability to create hierarchical relations in the pack based on abstract notions, beliefs. Whereas other animals have to do it through pure physical power projection. The wolf has to grapple to determine which one is going to get the choicest cut, the first bite or whatever. And so we get this ability to think abstractly and to coordinate with words and beliefs rather than physical dominance contest when we establish our pecking orders. And so I guess just to round out then what that means in terms of the distinction between physical power and abstract power is abstract power is based on a belief system and the ability to tell other people our beliefs about the world and have them adopt them. So you mentioned Jordan Peterson, it's a very persuasive talker. That's an excellent example of someone exercising a very developed capacity for abstract power. He's able to describe, Lowry kind of describes how one might go about creating an abstract power hierarchy. Imagine a walled enclosure and what it's walling off is a desired state of being. And standing, and there's a gate to get into that walled enclosure. And so the gatekeepers of the abstract power based hierarchy, the priests, the judges, they are the ones who adjudicate who has attained that higher state and therefore is entitled to the resources that the tribe, the clan, the nation state has. And so abstract power allocates resources based on rank of the people who subscribe to that belief system. Physical power based hierarchies allocate resources to who can project the most physical power. So that kind of is the evolutionary story that gives us those two types of power based hierarchies, one based on physical power, which we see in the animal world, and one based on abstract power, which we see in, again, humans who have evolved as pack animals and developed a capacity for abstract thought to coordinate.
That's excellent. Yeah, just to speak a little bit more to how these two things are intertwined. It's like human intelligence or the capacity for abstract power, which is something that we have, at least at an order of magnitude above all other animals, right? Multiple orders of magnitude. You know, he gives the example of like a parrot can recite certain words or a dog might know what ball means, but we take it to a whole nother level. This makes, the connection is that the capacity for abstract, for abstraction basically, makes us more physically powerful because it allows us to coordinate as one organism, basically. So you could, another way to think of abstract power is the ability to make agreements, right? That we can communicate through symbol, we can make agreements. You know, even things like morality, you could say is an abstract power, right? That I know that when we're hunting and I turn my back to face the animal, you're not going to stab me in the back, right? There's, there's a certain implicit level of trust that we have. And when we, when we can, since we can scale that in a way that no other animal can, we can bring more physical force to bear than any other animal can. And this gets amplified further through the creation of tools and technologies. So that's really what it's all about, I think, is ultimately it's coordination, communication, agreements ultimately, right? So the agreements that enable the amplification of physical power ultimately is what makes humans dominant. And he gives the example, this is out on page 134 and 135. Try to flash this to the camera. But he's basically showing, you know, it shows the cost, what he calls the benefit to cost ratio of hunting and then how we use abstract power, right? It's like, okay, there's a bunch of elk in the field or caribou, whatever these are. There's a certain benefit to hunting and killing all those caribou, right? Presumably they're meat and whatever else we're going to harvest from them. But there's also a big cost because they're dispersed in a field and while they're big ass animals and they can hurt you, right? However, if we use our abstract, our capacity for abstract thinking, running simulations, as you said, and we agree to, you know, funnel them all into this canyon where they're very tightly coupled and then presumably we have a gravitational advantage by standing above them. We can throw spears down on them or drop rocks on them, whatever it may be. We can now kill that same amount of caribou in a much more energy efficient manner. So we can project physical power in a more fortuitous situation or more advantageous situation by using abstract power to get them into that canyon versus just trying to take them down with brute force out in the field. And so this is, I mean, I think it's a good, it's a very simple example, but that's basically the name of the game, right? Okay, I don't, where would we go from there? Let's see here.
Can I drop in on that?
Yeah, please.
So I love talking about this theory of mind because what it introduces to us is a very rational explanation for what we see in military veterans, which is a high level of post-traumatic stress disorder. If I am capable of envisioning, feeling, imagining, predicting your suffering, I have an advantage because then I can strategize to that. However, as you noted when you were talking, the organization, we're gonna, you know, there's a cost doing, there's a cost to everything and that cost is that huge degree of empathy, that huge suffering, that you do feel what you're, what you're killing. And that brings us again back to this spiritual philosophical side of it, of where you are overcoming your own desire to remain unaffected by emotion in order to do the thing that you know must be done. And the other comment I wanted to make was the cooperation as we organize and we create the abstract power based hierarchies so that we can cooperate, so we can move forward. One of the first things that you learn in like a structures engineering class is that this two by four can hold 10 pounds, this two by four can hold 10 pounds. We put them together, they can hold 30, right? Cooperation is not linear, it is exponential. And so there are these gains to it where the more that we do abide by these hierarchical rules, the more we are able to accomplish. However, the cost of that, we're, we're able to as a group inflict our power on that around us. But the cost is that we must always ascribe to the idea of intra-competition, of continually reassessing who is the best and the most fit to lead. Because you can imagine a situation where you have two packs. And let's just say they're both led by a guy named Joe. And one pack, you decide, hey, we're going to leave this old leader in power that has no decision-making ability, no rational thought capability. But we're going to continue to follow blindly wherever he wanders, whatever turn he decides to go down, whatever stairs he chooses to fall down. And then you've got another pack led by a guy named Joe, who is going to say, well, what we're going to do is we're going to have a competition here. Whoever kicks whoever's ass gets to be in charge and then everybody else falls in line. And every week we're going to do that again. And so we're sitting in this world now where we've got the, the Joe Biden pack lost to the Joe Rogan pack, right? And, and it's because one of them recognized that in order to maintain the abstract power based hierarchy, you have to inflict power. That you have to organize abstraction based on power or else it becomes fragile. In, in Taleb's words, you, you sacrifice resilience in order to subdue volatility. And then that, you know, your house crumbles.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a reconciliation that has to occur, right? Like we can start coordinating with one another through our imaginations or through our agreements. But if that coordination or organization that we create is not reconciled to the reality of, is this the best physical power projection technique or, or, or organization, basically, right? Hierarchy, who should be on top, who should lead, who should do this, who should specialize in what domains? If we're not checking that against the actual demands of the physical power projection game frequently, then we're going to get disconnected from reality, basically. And I, this kind of goes where I wanted, what I wanted to ask next is like, how does Bitcoin fit into this picture? We've elaborated on physical power projection. We've elaborated on abstract power. What is Bitcoin? Bitcoin is this interesting thing that's kind of between the two. Obviously it's secured, the integrity of its supply is secured by physical power projection through proof of work mining. But it's also this abstraction, it's just an idea. We're all kind of agreeing to it through our own incentives. How do we fit Bitcoin into the confluence of physical versus abstract or political power?
Yeah. So this is Lowry's, one of the really intuitive leaps in his thesis, one of the, the dot connecting things, that's an aha moment is in the past, we've used physical power projection in order to, the animals use it to determine who gets the resources amongst themselves. And as you mentioned, humans use it whenever an abstract power based hierarchy becomes too oppressive, it gets overthrown in a war, a bloody war. And whenever an abstract power based hierarchy leads to, as you mentioned, the Joe Biden character leading the people astray, becomes non-meritocratic and the weak take hold, people self-domesticate. It becomes weak. That abstract power based hierarchy is invaded from outside and then devoured by the Mongols or whoever comes in, you know, some stronger force that sees that bounty waiting. And so in the past, war has served a function to discipline and break up bad abstract power based hierarchies. We now have a new form of abstract power based hierarchy, Lowry says, which is software. And so that's, we have these large transnational conglomerates or whatever, like Facebook, Google. We have large piece, our financial resources, most of our, our health data, banking, our artistic productions. These are all now digital resources in cyberspace and they're controlled by who controls the software. And these are abstractions. And so the intuitive leap is how do we do a power projection contest, competition, a war in cyberspace? You can't do it with mass, so maybe you can do it with energy. And so Bitcoin as power projection is non-kinetic, charges moving across resistors, a energy based competition, but that doesn't leave bodies on the ground. You don't have tanks rolling, you don't have bombs dropping. So we moved from kinetic to non-kinetic warfare, from hard war to soft war with Bitcoin. We now have a protocol where we can still have a dominance competition based on the expenditure of real world energy, but it doesn't involve mass. It just involves charges moving across a resistor. So it's a real world thing. It's not abstract in any, in, in any relevant sense. The proof of work aspect of the Bitcoin protocol ties Bitcoin to the real world and uses real world energy to make computer bits provably costly in a way that is the use of power projection into cyberspace.
Yeah, it's, this is why Bitcoin is so bewildering because it is the concretization of an abstraction or the reification of an idea or like it's, it's, it's a bridge between the physical and the digital or the physical and the abstract, to use the term here. I don't think we have anything else like that, so far as I know. I mean, I, I can't think of anything comparable whatsoever, right? I mean, obviously, cyberspace has a physical footprint in terms of there being servers and whatnot, providing these abstractions or simulations to us, delivering it to us on monitors. But it's not being secured, right? It's, it's, it can be hijacked by, well, really anyone, basically. Anyone that can control the money printer or control physical power. But Bitcoin is something different. It's a, it's a piece of data that can't be manipulated in that way because it is concretized through proof of work, power projection, basically. And I think, yeah, that's probably, we're like somewhere near the point where this is why Bitcoin is such a big idea and why it's so hard to get your head around it. Because well, there's just never been anything like it. So therefore you get people like Jason creating an entire novel thesis to try and describe it. So yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot. And there's at one point, I think in the same video we were watching earlier where he's talking about computer developers constantly taking this march towards more and more efficient computing power or, yeah, efficient computing rather, as if logic itself could be used to secure itself against the, the threat of physical power. But the reality is you almost need the opposite, right? You need something that's very computationally expensive so that it can't be, you have to actually, this is what the 51% attack is in Bitcoin, right? Like the only known threat to Bitcoin is the 51% attack, which means you have to summon 51% of the computing power that is already securing the network to then hijack the network. And even if you did that, there's still incentives in place that would make you act honestly. That was a real threat early on with Bitcoin, but at this point, it's, it's the most vast and secure computing network in the history of the human race. To even bring that much energy to bear would take years of production. And then obviously if you start producing those energy resources, you're, you're triggering others to start bringing more resources to bear as well. So there's this game theory aspect that seemingly makes Bitcoin undisruptable, even by its own known threat vector of the 51% attack.
The uniqueness of Bitcoin makes it so hard to grasp. To put it in terms, if you hear Elon Musk explain first principles, he talks about you've, in order to understand first principles, you have to first understand what is the opposite of that. And that's reason by analogy. And reason by analogy simply says, I understand this thing because I can liken it to this other thing that I'm familiar with. What you're missing in all of that is you, you don't understand the first thing. You're just familiar with it, right? And so you don't have truth.
Right.
You're, you're simply perpetuating whatever biasy lie impression that comes from that first thing. And to think about things from first principles, it's not as fun because you can't say, oh, this is like a bread basket. This is like a monster truck. This is like, you know, it just, you, you can't do that. You have to really break it down into like what Elon did. He's like, hey, I want to build a rocket. I can't get anybody to sell me a rocket. What's a rocket made of? This, 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 and this. Okay, what's the cost of this, 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 and this? Well, it turns out it's like one one thousandth the cost of buying one. Well, just, I'll bake my own, right? I'll put that in the oven and make it. One of the quotes from Lowry that I drew out, as history has shown time and time again, all it takes is one engineer to subvert the authority of an entire military institution and undermine its combined expertise. And so let's just replace, let's say, as history has shown time and time again, all it takes is Satoshi Nakamoto to subvert the authority of an entire global financial fiat lie and undermine its combined extracted power. Something like that. It's, it takes technology. And we all have to, I think, acknowledge that it has never been for lack of will that people have fallen under oppression. It is because they have not had the technology that enables them to crawl out of that hole.
Yes.
And move, move further and move beyond. So when you talk about, you know, what is Bitcoin to understand it? It is, again, it is the huge idea. It's the one hour, I think it's a scam, the 10 hours, I think it might be real, the hundred hours. Maybe I should invest in this because it sounds like a great idea. The thousand hours, it's everything. This is my whole life now, right? So yeah, it's just really hard to put a grasp on it because it is so many things. It is money.
Yes.
But it's also a weapon and maybe weapon's not the right word for it. Maybe weapon is just what we have used because weapon is what we have used in the past to secure the pathways to our resources. It was just a means to an end. But what we needed was simply a barrier in between us and the oppressor. And, and now we have that where it can't be extracted.
It's wonderfully said. And I think this is why Bitcoin, Bitcoiners, Bitcoin podcasts often get into the nature of language, right? We get very particular definitions because you're trying to really get to the bottom of what we mean. And what you call reasoning by analogy, I would actually say that's, that's built into language itself. That, that we, language is a metaphorical construct, right? So we're constantly reasoning about the unfamiliar in terms of the familiar, right? This is why when the internet emerged, we called it the internet or we'd call it the information superhighway or a digital library, right? We take something that's familiar and then we reason about the new thing in terms of the thing that we don't know about in terms of something that we do know about. And so with that, you inevitably import all your biases. You know, all these things have different aspects too, right? It's like, okay, when you say information superhighway, well, what does that mean? Does that mean there's cars on it? Does that mean there's lanes? Does it, you know, there's, you're only invoking a certain aspect basically of the highway as a metaphor. And it's really the, the interconnectivity, I guess, when it comes to the internet. But when you say that word to someone else, well, they have all their own meanings and interpretations assigned to it. So language is this inherently limited thing by which we're dealing with reality and one another. And it seems to me that, yeah, again, people often mistake, people just don't understand that. Like it seems to be a large cohort of people that think you can just speak truth or speak untruth. I mean, obviously you can speak untruth. It's much more difficult to speak truth though. Because I, you know, maybe mathematics, you know, I think one of the only true things you can actually say, this is a whole nother can of worms, but this will be in the book that I'm going to release at some point. But I think Mises figured it out where he said, the only true thing you can say is that man must act, which means man must use means to pursue ends. And the reason it's the only true thing you can say is because when I say man must act, I'm using the means of words to pursue the end of communication. So it's like a performative confirmation. Everything else we're saying is basically metaphorical, even when we say the word understand, right? It's like you're invoking the physical experience of standing under something to get a deeper perspective on it. You're importing that physical experience into this abstract experience of cognitive comprehension, basically. And so, yeah, it's, we need, and then the other way to maybe flip all that around is like, you know, Bitcoin is this really complicated thing between abstract and physical power. But it's also the ultimate implementation of this ancient idea of just private property, right? It's like, how do you sort disputes over scarce resources? What's the optimal institution for that? It's private property. We've known that for a long time, many centuries. But it's always been a trust-based implementation, right? That you need to trust the monopoly on violence, that they would actually follow the rules that they set out for themselves and for everyone else. And you're in the classic conundrum of who guards the guardians, right? Who guards the, the administrators of the rule based system or the rule makers? How do you prevent the rule makers from either not following the rules or changing the rules or exploiting the rules to their own benefit and at the expense of everyone else? Like, how do you solve that problem?
And the failure has always been that we try to do it with logic.
And we always try to do it with logic. We always try to do it with agreements. We always try to do it with reasoning, but we needed some way to root it into physical power. And I think that's what, this is like the profound thing about Bitcoin is it, it has somehow imported the integrity of the laws of physics into this social domain where we're looking for an agreement that's not based on any, we don't need to trust any individuals to maintain the agreement. We needed something that's like, like the laws of physics, like it's just there and we all play by it, which is foundational to this whole thesis, right? The laws of physics are zero trust, permissionless, egalitarian, because no one can change the rules. But we can all change the rules of money and law and, you know, like you can always break the law. You can always, not everyone can change the law, but if you can summon enough physical force, you can definitely conquer your own territory, make your own country and write your own rules. So yeah, it's a lot to absorb. I don't know, like it's, we sound crazy talking about it, but I mean, welcome to the Bitcoin rabbit hole. This is why it takes a thousand hours, I think, to really get that level of comprehension.
Physics, you, you can't win, you can't break even, and you can't leave the game.
Yes.
And so to your point, if you can't win, you can't break even and you can't leave the game, it means you have to play.
Yes.
And what is play? What's another word for that is you, you must act. And then let's talk about Jordan Peterson and the hierarchy. Why must you act? Well, you must act in order to exert a force that reverses entropy locally as much as possible. First to yourself, make your bed. Second, to the people around you and moving further and further out in order to expand this control over entropy. You know, seeking truth in your environment and the surroundings and moving towards that.
Yeah, it's wonderfully said. In Bitcoin, we often dream about the idea of forming citadels, which are independent, self-sovereign communities that have their own energy, food and water resources. Today, that dream is becoming a reality at the farm at Okefenokee. The farm is a 705 acre regenerative agriculture community located at the Florida Georgia Line near Folkeston, Georgia. The farm is known as the healthiest place on earth and it includes orchards, organic standing gardens, regenerative animal pastures, berry fields and much, much more. Today, the farm features 25 custom-built cabins and has plans to construct 225 more in the years ahead. The farm has its own food, energy and water sources and is completely off-grid. So if you're looking to join a citadel community comprised of sovereign individuals, then go to O K E farm.com today to learn more about membership. Make sure to tell them that I sent you for a $21,000 discount on custom cabin pricing. Again, that's O K E farm.com to learn more about joining this revolutionary regenerative agriculture community. Forget multivitamins and other supplements. Animal organs are the most nutrient-dense foods on the planet. You can get 100 times more nutrients from organs than you can from muscle meats. But the problem with eating organs is that they are difficult to find in stores. They are difficult to prepare. And even when they are prepared well, they often don't taste great. Thankfully, Heart and Soil Supplements has made consuming organ meats so much easier by providing powdered organs in capsule form. Organ meats include everything your body needs to thrive. Vitamins, minerals, peptides, proteins and growth factors. This is why organ meats were the most prized foods for our ancestors. Fortunately for us, Heart and Soil makes these treasured foods easily accessible. So go to heartandsoil.co today and use discount code BREEDLOVE to get started on your journey to optimal health and vitality. Again, that's heartandsoil.co, discount code BREEDLOVE.
The role of Bitcoin in decentralizing and breaking down these
Decentralizing and breaking down these abstract power based hierarchies. War in the past has always had this emergent benefit that when a, a country, when an abstract power based hierarchy becomes too powerful. There is a revolution either internally, if it's too oppressive or invasion from the outside, if it's. Weak relative to how much resources it has, how much benefit there is to invade it. But one of Lowry's points is that we've now reached the point of kinetic stalemate where. There cannot be a large scale war like there was in the past to break down and discipline these abstract power based hierarchies. In the past, they were broken down and disciplined. We've moved from god kings to monarchies to constitutional republics. Because of the threat of the people being governed when they're too oppressive. But now we've reached the point where nation states have nuclear arms. And so it's mutually assured destruction if there is. An attempt to have a war between them directly. Even though war does have these emergent benefits of again disciplining and breaking down these abstract power based hierarchies. And so part of the beauty again of. Lowry's thesis and a Bitcoin in general is it's going to allow us to have a form of quote unquote war, whatever it is. A energy competition among rival nations that goes past the kinetic stalemate that we're left at. And so hopefully can bring some discipline to the abstract power based hierarchies we operate within, to our own financial system. To the, again, software based transnational corporations that restrict our speech and control our data. If we have, and you mentioned moving on to this, that electro cyber dome over our computers that is Bitcoin. We do have that way to protect our, ourselves and even though we've scaled kinetic conflict beyond usefulness.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, I mean, that's a great segue into the cybersecurity aspects of this, like what? What does it mean? I guess we say, how does Bitcoin's proof of work mechanism? Allow for it to serve as an electro cybersecurity instrument? Obviously we talk about Bitcoin as money a lot. And then you get into the nature and history of money, which is its own rabbit hole as explored on this show, but he, again, he's doing a reframe here. What is an electro cybersecurity instrument and how, what is it about Bitcoin and proof of work that enable it to be one?
Yeah, the important, a key point to remember about proof of work and Lowry goes in this in depth in his thesis is. That was developed separately from Bitcoin as a security protocol.
Anti spam.
Exactly, anti spam. And that is still the function it's serving. Spam now though is a very broad concept of all of these denial service attacks, cybil attacks. Any sort of malicious control signal coming at your computer, trying to get at your data is spam in a sense because it's unwanted. And so this proof of work protocol that was developed to protect from spam, to protect us from spam. Was incorporated into Bitcoin is of course, you know, fundamental to it. And now we see that Bitcoin has been sitting under the electro cyber dome of proof of work for 14 years. We have proof of concept that. This electro cyber dome, and again, that's a metaphor, of course. You mentioned early on, Robert, that. It's, you know. We hesitate to call Bitcoin a weapon and we hesitate to say that it's like offensive. I forget the word used aggressive, something like that. But it's a, it is definitely a passive power projection technique in the form of a shield or a wall. In that it is a protective mechanism like a shell that's an animal might evolve or even that membrane that first. Again, kind of captured resources for itself over a hydrothermal vent. Lowry has an image in his thesis of a computer. And then you have all these malicious control signals coming towards it. That's how we operate if we don't have proof of work. We are dependent upon abstract power based hierarchies, software providers to protect us from all of these malicious control signals. That they're not going to be the malicious control, control signal. We have to assume that. And also that they're going to have appropriate security. It's, we've self domesticated. We've given all of our. Self defense powers to software providers to protect our computers. We now have the second amendment in cyber form, the ability to defend our own digital resources. By. Beginning with financial resources with Bitcoin, putting them under this electro cyber dome. So that's one way to get it. There's many ways one can begin to talk about what it means to project. Physical power into cyberspace, what it doesn't mean to defend property that is virtual. And I, I do think Lowry's metaphor of the electro cyber dome is a good starting point in that way.
Yeah, I think too, I mean, tying to his other metaphor, which is on the cover of the book, right?
Right. Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
Like what, what are antlers? They're, they're neither offensive nor defensive. They're somewhere in between. They're like this maneuver warfare implement because. You know, you would typically think, oh, they're offensive. They're using these antlers to attack something, but when you see that deer. Or I guess any animal with antlers are actually resolving these alpha male disputes. In a non lethal way. So like it is offensive, but there's also a defense built into it. So that they're not killing one another. So there's like, again, this. Middle ground somehow reached with. With the antlers metaphor, and that's why he's calling Bitcoin digital antlers. Which is yet another metaphor in addition to the cyber dome you're describing. And what, you know. The problem is, which is core to the Bitcoin ethos, is that we are trusting these technology companies. And you know, what, what's the problem? I was like, well, when you trust them, they can censor you, they, you. On social media, you're not the customer, you're the product, right? They're selling your attention to advertisers. They don't have any other revenue model, basically. So. If you can own your own data and protect it with these antlers or this electro cyber dome, well, then all of a sudden you can be censorship resistant online. You can. You can. Not be exploited in the traditional social media model of just being the product, right? There's, there's other ways to do social media now that are emerging. You could look into stuff like Noster. It's not part of Bitcoin, but it's like enabled by Bitcoin. The reason Noster is even. Being funded basically is by a bunch of Bitcoiners and it's being developed by a bunch of Bitcoin developers. So. It's kind of this echo of Bitcoin's success now, now giving rise to other decentralized protocols like Noster and, and that whole universe. So. Yeah, that's all I was gonna say about that. I hope you guys have anything to add there.
Yeah, so. Let me think about how to say this. In a way that has continuity. When I learned about Bitcoin, I was a lender and I was financing farms and ranches and I. It took me down the money rabbit hole. Because I had customers coming in with balance sheets showing. Highest crop yields ever, highest crop prices ever, highest government subsidies ever, and they all needed money. They were all going, these things do not add up. And core to understanding Bitcoin. Even if you are looking at it from this side, I do believe is to understand the dollar. Because you can't understand how Bitcoin is better than that thing unless you understand the. The trials and tribulations and failures. And so.
Good. Understand the problem to understand the solution.
Exactly. Right. Yeah. And so I. You know, I, I jumped off and I decided that the thing that I wanted to do was I wanted to build a library and marketplace of best practices digitally. And I, I got 99% done with that. And then I read this and I halted because. I realized that there was no way for me to secure your information if you use my app, his information, my information. In the traditional sense, put it on Amazon web servers, put it on Azure, wherever. There is, those will always fail and I likened it, I had the revelation when I was reading this. As Lowry talks about logic, securing logic and how that is an inevitable. It's not even a failure. It's that when someone finds the exploit, it is what it was intended to do. You don't put a door there unless you expect someone to go through it. I grew up on a farm and I spent all of my summers fixing fence because. We learned. Everybody knows this who's ever had cattle. You can have the biggest pasture in the world. You can have a 5,000 acre pasture, put 20 cows in there. And there's one hole in the fence and they find it. So that's what was my thought was that. If there is a hole, the cows will get out. And so building upon this, we with Bitcoin have the power to secure our financial information and. Perhaps as we finish out the discussion. Then we'll see that there is potential with Bitcoin to build higher layers upon that to protect. Personal information to make it costly for. A third party, not just to extract my information. Where currently I just sign it away with the end user license agreement, right? You can do whatever you want with it. Here it is. Here's my information. And I heard, I heard a marketer for Amazon, this was seven years ago, talking about, they had two million data points on every single person that. Separate data points where they can predict and it's well known, you know, Amazon knows before you do that you're pregnant. Right? Based upon your, based upon your habits, but. If I'm able to not just protect you from extracting my information. Then I'm also able to. Force you to pay for my attention. Do you want to send me an ad? Okay. Zap me some stats, right? Put your cost on the line in order to gain some benefit. And. I don't think that anyone, the, the saying is that you're not bullish enough. And I don't relate that to price. I relate that to how it changes our culture because I don't think. People quite understand. Marketing is effectively a, it's a spam attack. It's a zero, nearly zero cost way of. Firing lies at people. And hoping that they bite on one. And if we make that costly, what does that do to our society? Do we, do we then move towards things that are more sustainable with a lower time preference and? How, how does, how does that reshape the world if we look at the current? Top of the S and P 500 and we see that those are all information companies. They're all information technology companies who have built up trillion dollar assets. Based upon. Using us as the product and extracting that value. And when I, now, when I look at the, at the, the marvelous magnificent aid or the Fang or whatever it is. When I look at that, what I see is that's our value and it's coming back to us. And it, it will come back to us. I'm very hopeful for that.
Yeah, it's wonderful. They're often called data monopolies, but they're really. Especially in the social media domain, they are attention monopolies, right? Like they are monopolizing human attention, selling it to advertisers. And with that, they get all the preferences of those advertisers. They also. You know, the plandemic again was a great example of this. You can just engineer. Consent, you can engineer. Psychology, basically, right? You can tell people it's safe and effective and all this other bullshit. And if it's paid for by the advertisers, well, then. Through repetition, you can just hypnotize people into believing things, right? So it's, it's a tool for social engineering when it's coupled with a money printer. And that's a big problem, right? That's a big problem. We, we really need freedom of speech online. Just like we need freedom of speech, period. And it seems like that was just not possible prior to. Bitcoin, and I guess I would say by extension, Noster at this point. Clearly Bitcoin being open source software is protected under the first amendment. But Lowry's framing of Bitcoin as a military technology brings in. The possibility of it being protected under the second amendment in the, in the United States. What are your guys' views on that?
So practically speaking, of course, there's an entire body of jurisprudence around the second amendment, what it means. And I'm no expert on that. So there's going to be some headwinds maybe to getting something novel like Bitcoin or proof of work accepted, but. Just kind of generally philosophically, if it's, if it's that to a, to a T, that it is. A way that. Military grade, I don't want to say it that way, but military grade technology can be acquired by. The common person to defend their own resources. So it is something that people can. You can buy these provably costly bits and then you can transmit them across the Bitcoin network in a provably costly way. You can take your, the defense of your own financial sovereignty into your hands. And so, I mean, it, it seems I see the philosophical alignment with second amendment, of course, the practicality of it. There, there may be as a leap to go from personal like firearms to. Under the second amendment, given the history of the jurisprudence there, protecting something like proof of work, a, a protocol. But a man can dream and that would be excellent to see if there could be that philosophical and practical congruence.
I think you, you, you have the right to keep and bear arms. And it doesn't explicitly say firearms. It says arms. And in one of his talks, Lowry defines what an arm is. And an arm is simply the thing that you use to protect your resources. From those who would take it, including. And I'm quoting Lowry, including and specifically your government.
Of course.
Because. Inherently, we knew when we set up this country and we had great experience and had left it. And had to try and, and engineer this great experiment in order to limit that power. And. And you, you must give people that which is theirs, which is their. Ability to defend that which, which gives them life and, and, and provides them an opportunity to move forth into the world and. And lower the entropy that surrounds them. I really love this argument. Because he. So. Let me think if I want to, if I want to say this right. Protecting. Bitcoin under the first amendment is. Really hard to deny. And, and Lowry kind of tells that story. I think it was actually in an interview with you where he talks about. He personally knows the, the lawyer that fought the PGP. Case and he said, it was actually, it was, you know, originally classified under the export munitions control. And then the argument that they brought was. This harms no one. This is words and letters, you know, and the, and the famous story is that they printed it out and they laid it on the desk. And they said, this is what you're limiting. This is not a grenade. This is not a missile. This is words and, you know, letters and numbers. And so they lay it there and they go. Why wouldn't people like not, you know, prove to us how this is something that people shouldn't have.
Munitions, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, it immediately became a first amendment argument at that point. It's like irrefutably.
Exactly. And to protect it then under, and I, I agree with Grant, and by the way, Grant is a phenomenal lawyer. And so he obviously doesn't practice in this area, but he kind of understands. You know, the difficulty that it would take in order to. In order to mount an argument. And there are things that you would have to leap over, but. Again, we go back to, let's define our terms. What is an arm? Is an arm something that gives me the ability to defend my resources? Then at that point, an arm is the thing that does that. And that's what Bitcoin does. It defends me from seizure of my most valuable resource, which is. Financial, but the financial part is what I traded my time, my money, my experience, my lifeblood for, right? And so it gives me an opportunity to defend my own liberty from those that would take it. Including and especially my own government.
Amen to that. You know, the way I like to look at this is, well, first amendment is the freedom of speech. One of my favorite descriptions or definitions of that is the, the purpose of the freedom of speech is so that our. Thoughts and ideas can go to battle and die so that our bodies don't have to. Right? It's a, it's a way to resolve disputes rationally, dialogically and non violently. Obviously preferable, like you said, we don't want to have to fight to the death over every idea, every argument, every sandwich, as Lowry and I talked about before. It's the, it is one of the divine things about being human that we have this capacity for speech and the ability to make agreements. And reach agreements non violently. Now, obviously. That's backstopped by the threat of violence, but that should be a measure of last resort, right? We don't want to devolve to animality if we don't have to. And I think the long arc of human history is figuring out how to not have to do that, right? How do we, how do we resolve disputes any other way? You know, we have social institutions. We have the rule of law. We have, you know, jails. We have all kinds of stuff, right? We don't have to just go to war, basically anything but war. But it is ultimately backed by physical power as we have covered today multiple times. So I think the sequence of amendments is important. We have the first amendment because it's the highest and most important thing, the freedom of speech. You know, again, so that you can engage in this truth discovery process with one another. And then the second amendment. Is to protect the first amendment, right? Your right to engage. If anyone tries to censor you or stop you or prevent you from speaking your mind. Or coerce you, right? That, well, we have the second amendment to. Maintain a symmetry of power projection capability between people. And this is very important, right? It's, it's, I mean, that's what Bitcoin is in a way, right? It's a symmetry of the application of rules. So it's a level playing field, if you will. And that's why it is so effective at rendering justice, basically. If you have one group of people that have. If you have one group of people that have the guns and another people, a group of people that do not, you have an asymmetry of power projection capability. And I would say that asymmetry always leads to atrocity. If you look at human history, every time one group has a superior military technology over another, it gets exploited at some point, right? We're not saints. And even if one group of people don't exploit it, some group of people will come into power ultimately that do. I think that's what's happening in the Middle East right now, by the way, right? We have the Zionist mafia with the superior military technology and all of their tentacles basically genociding a group of people that have inferior military technology. That's how history will regard it, in my opinion. We are, of course, inundated in all kinds of propaganda and bullshit about this being an ancient, interminable religious conflict. I think it's all bullshit. And with so many years of hindsight, I don't know how many it will take. That's how it will be looked at. But the, the lesson is clear, right? We need symmetry to have justice, right? We need symmetry of rules. We need symmetry of power projection capability. Have you ever wanted to start a business in the Bitcoin space? If so, then the Wolf Startup Accelerator could be for you. Wolf is the first startup accelerator dedicated exclusively to businesses developing in the Bitcoin Lightning Network. Four times each year, Wolf brings teams from around the world to New York City to work with like-minded entrepreneurs, pushing the boundaries of what's possible with Bitcoin and Lightning. The program is designed to help early-stage companies achieve product-market fit, develop their brand, secure early-stage funding and grow businesses that fuel the global adoption of Bitcoin. Go to wolfnyc.com to learn more or apply today. Again, that's W O L F N Y C dot com. Would you rather have one Bitcoin today or two Bitcoin a few years from now? Bitcoin mining is a tried and true strategy for accumulating Bitcoin. Over a two to four-year timeframe, successful miners have consistently accumulated more Bitcoin than they otherwise would with a traditional dollar-cost average strategy. Blockware's mining as a service enables you to start mining Bitcoin from your laptop. Blockware handles everything from securing the miners to sourcing low-cost power to configuring the mining pool. They do it all. Plus, with Blockware's one-of-a-kind mining marketplace, you can buy and sell live Bitcoin miners with just a few strokes of the keyboard. In this marketplace, buyers get to purchase live machines at vetted facilities, enabling them to mine with zero lead time. And sellers get the opportunity to liquidate their machines and hosting contracts at will. This means you can mine Bitcoin with zero long-term commitment and high liquidity on your mining rigs. Blockware will even cover your miner's energy bill for the first week of each of your mining rigs when you sign up at mining dot blockware solutions dot com slash breedlove. Again, that's one free week of Bitcoin mining at mining dot blockware solutions dot com slash breedlove. Let me ask you, some people, Bitcoiners specifically, get nervous about Bitcoin being classified or protected under the Second Amendment because they think it would open it up to regulation as a munition. What are your views? And then they also tend to throw Lowry under the bus and say, oh, he's a spook. He's trying to get Bitcoin regulated and all that. What are your guys' views on that?
So he's spoken on this a few times that he is, he is a military, is a member of the military. And the cohort that he's talking to is other people in the military. And he does want to convince them of the importance of Bitcoin. He has mentioned in one podcast, he wants to take Bitcoin away from treasury, potential regulation by another part of the US government. So it's not like it's, you know, all or none. If it's a military-grade technology, it's regulated. If it's something else, it's not regulated. But I think if maybe behind Lowry's thought process as well, and reading this thesis, he humorously refers to himself as Major Jason Spook Lowry in his introduction. And he does have a sense of humor, but you see a strain of thinking in here where he sees the importance of warfare, warfare's utility to keep abstract power-based hierarchies from becoming oppressive. And so that is returning power to the people. And he sees Bitcoin as a way to do that, I think. Bitcoin is a form of personal sovereignty, personal self-defense that in the form of a militia almost, where people take defense into their own hands. He mentions at one point that he thinks it will change the idea of national defense because it's going to change the idea of nation. Once nations are not the guarantors of the freedom of speech or of the defense of property, what is the nation state? Why do we need it? So there's enough, not hints, there's enough direct references in here to at least acquit Lowry of trying to urge this towards military regulation by the military or as a military-grade technology or whatever. Again, I don't know the laws in this area, so I couldn't say if, probably the law doesn't matter. It's going to come down to contest of wills and in a political question of, you know, is there resentment at that time between the people who don't have Bitcoin and the people that do? Are there lobbies and whatnot? And that will resolve itself as a political question. And however it resolves itself, Bitcoin will keep on chugging along and doing what it does. But I think, I don't, again, I would just say that I don't think Lowry is trying to get it regulated. I think his thesis, if you read it in detail and understand where he's coming from, it's a, it's persuasively, it's a persuasive account of Bitcoin as too important to regulate if we want to maintain dominance as an American people aside from as the United States.
Right.
I think one thing that was very accurately predicted in the sovereign individual was that in the age of digital money, then restrictive regulations put on citizens would be counteracted, not through vote, but through relocation.
Yes.
And we see that, that we're seeing this being acted out right now where people have that choice and they can move. Now, not everyone does have that choice. Not everyone does have that resource. And so when you ask if I, you know, am I nervous about Bitcoin being classified under the Second Amendment? I am not whatsoever because I, and this is not an invitation. This is not a challenge. This is not a threat. But the hats that you see in Texas with the cannon on it and underneath it says, come and take it. The $5 wrench attack does exist where you can beat someone's password out of them and they can give up their password. The problem with that, not problem, but the benefit with that is that it does not work at scale. We cannot do that. You're, you know, you, you cannot send out a military and individually beat the Bitcoin out of them in order to extract it simply because you were unable to recognize the power of it. And there is, I think, this, this is something that I do love about Bitcoiners because they, they do proliferate in their efforts to educate other people. Because they, they truly want to help. Like I genuinely go to bed at night fearful, worried about my parents and, and my siblings and their ability to survive in a post fiat world. How can I orange pill them? How can I help move them along? Because of the stories from history that are so consistent. When we left a bimetallic standard as a globe, China lagged behind. And as a result, I think it's referred to as like the century of tears or something like that. Because in the span of like 15 or 30 years, they lost like 90% of their purchasing power against the world. And so it's not that, you know, there is that awkward time. There is the awkward time between the switchover of fiat money and fiat power, which is political power, abstract power. And Bitcoin completely replacing those things. There is that awkward time in between where there will be just disorder and chaos. And I, I recognize that that will happen. Which is why, in my mind, we all cheer for different things, but I cheer for Bitcoin to so devastatingly obliterate fiat in an instant because we're ripping the Band-Aid. Like, let's not do this thing that we did with fiat where we bleed society for 100 years. And then finally we recognize, oh God, you know, this has been an awful experience. We need to do something different. Let's flip it, then educate and, and move on. So no, I have, I have no fear of classifying it as a, as a munition. China tries to outlaw Bitcoin mining and what happens? It goes down to what? 60% of the hash power and then it starts climbing again.
Yeah.
You know, the most oppressive milita, most oppressive government in history cannot, and also the, the most subdued people, right? The most self-domesticated, you know, can you imagine what you would do if your government told you how many kids you could have?
Right.
Right? So we, we, I think, I just don't think it's an issue. I think it's a, it's a fun little thought experiment, but I think in actuality, it's one of those, Bitcoin does not need to be recognized. It will recognize itself. It will stand on the pedestal and proclaim its dominance. And you either step to it or you step against it, but you will step in line.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. It's very empowering to just self-organization, right? That, yeah, the example of China is useful because it is probably, it's definitely the most brutal and authoritarian regime that's ever existed. Also, as a consequence of that, and their, their path-dependent history, it's like they're the most domesticated society, right? They're, they're very, oh, I don't want to use the word compliant. Let's say docile.
It's a low-T continent, man.
Yeah, low-T continent. All right. We put it that way. That's fair enough. And look, I'm not trying to make, do America, American exceptionalism over here. We got plenty of low-T pockets, you know, all over the country. But there are, you brought up Texas, like there's a very undomesticated, some very undomesticated pockets too, right? That people just have that come and take it attitude. And the $5 wrench attack, that is real. That's a threat. But I mean, even there's still functions inside of Bitcoin. I mean, a multi-key custody solution like that, that nips that in the bud, right? It's like, sure, you can come $5 wrench attack me, but you're not going to get my private key because guess what? I don't have the private key. It's in pieces and it's separated and, you know, you don't know who it is or where they are or the protocol or the sequence that's necessary to unlock that. And so brute force doesn't work anymore. And you brought up voting with your feet. Bitcoin is so empowering to that. And I think about this a lot, that not only, obviously, if you're saving in Bitcoin, you're going to be accumulating more purchasing power over time, but you're accumulating that purchasing power in a highly concealable, hyper-portable asset. So that if you are ever mistreated by your local government or anyone, any local gang for that matter, they're all gangs at the end of the day, right? Government's just the biggest gang in the room. Well, you get to vote with your feet in a very high signal way because you get to take all of that purchasing power with you. Whereas in the past, when you're mistreated, you just, you're lucky to escape with the clothing on your back, right? When they're seizing your assets at the border or whatever the situation may be when people are leaving, you know, Soviet Russia or pick your favorite authoritarian regime that everyone's fleeing from. They didn't have recourse to something highly concealable and hyper-portable. So that changes the calculus too, right? It's actually incentivizing governments and criminals more broadly to negotiate with their victims rather than just purely $5 wrench attack them. And I guess maybe the, to frame this in Lowry's language, it's like Bitcoin is lowering the benefit of attack in the eyes of criminals. That they just can't get as much out of you as they could on a gold or fiat standard, that they could just seize the physical. They don't need to negotiate with you at all. That just, it just changes the leverage of the negotiation back in favor of the individual. And that's, again, if no man is better than his incentives, then that is, that radically changes the world from the inside out, right? From the inside, the heart of each individual out. And I do think, I would agree with you, there is going to be, I don't know how severe it will be. I think it will have to do with how quickly it unfolds. But there is going to be a large cohort of jealous and envious individuals. Jealousy being they want what you have. Envy being they just want to destroy you for having what they wish they had, right? Envy is much more poisonous and toxic than jealousy. And there's going to be a cohort of both jealous and envious people, the no-coiners, right? That when Bitcoin really does its thing, at whatever point, it's probably, it's already happening, right? There's already people that are saying, oh, it's the Bitcoin derangement syndrome, right? Like, oh, I heard about it five years ago and I didn't get it because it's total bullshit and it's going to zero, right? And they probably have a Peter Schiff poster on their wall, something like that. That's going to be a problem, actually. That's going to be a real problem. There's going to be people that are really mad that they missed the train and they're going to see all these Bitcoiners that are wildly successful. But again, back to voting with your feet, at least Bitcoiners will be like, you know what? If I'm surrounded by envious or jealous people, then maybe I'll just pick up my purchasing power and go wherever the fuck I want, right? We can self-organize into our own groupings and we'll have the financial means to do so. So I'm, I'm optimistic about the way that will play out.
Can I ask you?
So please.
A fun thought experiment that I like to think of is, Bology is fond of posting the Hanke Krauss hyperinflation table. And nearly every example, so first off, let's, let's.
Did you pull that up? Actually, I've never, I don't think I've seen that.
Okay. Yeah. H A N K E dash K R A U S S, I believe. So the Hanke Krauss hyperinflation table shows the fiat currencies and their time to hyperinflation and time to hyperinflation is defined in taking, what is the time that it takes for prices to double? So obviously we all know of the example of the Weimar Republic in Germany. And there's, I can't remember someplace in, if he finds it, someplace in Africa. But so a fun thought experiment that I like to play with myself is the stories of the Weimar Republic and the hyperinflation was that it was so fast that you would walk into the bar at the beginning of the night, pay for all your drinks because by the end of the night, the prices would have gone up. And here we go. So the fastest is Hungary, which took 15 hours to double in prices. And that was in 45 Zimbabwe in 2007, took one day and 45 minutes. There you have, there you have Germany down there in, in fifth place and it took a day and a half, right? So here's the thought experiment. Look at the dates on the left and tell me, did any of those occur when there was a digital off-ramp? Not one. And how much faster would that have occurred? If you were in Germany and you could have taken your Deutschmarks and you could have
Sold them for Bitcoin.
Gone on to strike or swan or wherever you go and just exchanged them for Bitcoin. How much faster would that have gone? Because those people were burning stacks of money to stay warm. They were wiping their ass with trillion-dollar bills in Zimbabwe. They were wiping their ass with trillion-dollar bills because it was cheaper than toilet paper. So.
You're right. So Bitcoin, in your opinion here, is an accelerant to the time required for prices to double because people, once they see the writing on the wall, inflation is a psychological phenomenon. If I think this thing is going to zero, I'm going to sell it to get anything that's not going to zero. And you have a digital off-ramp that that causes it to hyperinflate more quickly.
Yeah. But Bology talks about the three options that you have, which is like a voice, you can, you can voice against it. You can fall in line, basically, or you can exit.
Yeah.
And all of these examples did not have exit as an option. And so optionality, Taleb, right? So let's talk like, what does optionality do in this instance? And I, I just think, yeah, it's just fuel to the fire.
Yeah.
It just hyper, hyper blasts us off. And for anybody that doubts that this will happen, you, you see this on Twitter so much right now with financial analysts basically saying, oh, the United States is still in a good position, et cetera. Well, yeah, relative to everyone else, right? The dollar is relatively strong to other. But where's it going? Like, where is it going, right? I mean, since, since Charlie Munger called Bitcoin rat poison squared, Bitcoin is up 99.5% against the dollar, or sorry, against Berkshire Hathaway.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's up 5, 600% against the dollar, probably.
Yeah. I mean, so what happens? Like what, what happens then is like, I think people who believe that there is going to be a, a long timeframe, I don't believe that that exists because of the nature of game theory. When it is adopted by one big mover, everybody has to fall in line. And Lowry talks about how we've gotten lucky, how we were really close in the development of certain technologies that allowed us to be a leader where the competitor was mere months behind. The atomic bomb is a perfect example. The atomic bomb is a perfect example. And so if it's just months and instead of having to expend the resources, have the knowledge, have the laboratories and the testing and everything to develop this thing, all you have to do is exchange your fiat for Bitcoin over a weekend.
Right.
Then that's what you see with Michael Saylor.
Yeah.
$500 million to $100 billion in four years, right? So I just think that's a fascinating thing to consider. And I think it's so, it speaks to why Jason Lowry is so fervent in pounding the drum on this issue and, and getting us to take a look at it from a different viewpoint.
It's truly well said. And what I wanted to ask about next, we're deviating a little bit, but yeah, basically. Well, there you go. You're on my point there. How can Bitcoin be understood as a non lethal form of warfare, right? I mean, it's, we, we've touched on it. But that, I mean, if you just drop that sentence on anyone out on the street today, they're going to literally look at you like you're fucking crazy and run the other direction, right? That sounds asinine. Hopefully, we've unpacked some of the terms and ideas around that a little bit. How can we make this? How can we answer that question in a way that's accessible to the general population?
Yeah. I mean, there's two aspects of it, that it's non lethal and that it's a form of warfare. And I think to answer both in the easiest way possible, we can look at this image right at the beginning of the thesis. There are basically, everybody's familiar with the branches of the military that we have and that they are in chart, they are entrusted with warfighting functions. We have land that we need to protect the resources on land, so we have an army. We need to protect trade through the thoroughfare of the sea, so we have a navy. We have, we need to protect our airspace to allow, you know, transportation through the air and to protect the land under it. So we have an air force, space. We have a developing space force because we need to have satellites that can also aid in the resources that we have on, on land. So everybody, I think, is familiar that we are now developing new forms of resources within cyberspace. This is a new thoroughfare through which financial information travels, through which there are native digital assets that are stored in cyberspace. The military, you know, it can secure the infrastructure kind of of the internet. The, the, the army, the navy, they can do these types of things. But within cyberspace, how do we have, how do we fight the war to secure those, this thoroughfare to both transmit our financial information, other types of information, and protect ourselves from malicious types of attacks, hackers and things like that? And so that, I think, is the beginning of the conversation. And then one can say, well, there was this cyber security protocol developed back in the nineties. It's called proof of work and it's the only protocol that's been developed so far that requires those trying to get at certain types of information to expend real world energy. And so that, then what is an example of that? Well, Bitcoin has been using that type of structure for 14 years now and it's secure. And so do we, is it a type of warfare? I mean, maybe one doesn't need to use that word, but one can begin to talk about securing digital resources, the importance of using real world energy to do that.
It's definitely a competition, at least.
There we go.
Bitcoin mining is a competition. There's no question about that.
Yeah.
Warfare might be a, a word that's triggering this on, but it's, well, you know, again, semantics, where do you draw the line, right?
And it just seems like, you know, even if you are a pacifist, a pacifist has a relation to warfighting. They want to end it. And so what is the tool that ends warfighting? I mean, nuclear arms did that for a while. They've, you know, nipped some wars in the bud. And so you could have a pacifist anti warfighting technology and you can say that that's Bitcoin as well. I mean, it's kind of semantics, but.
Yeah, we use the term information warfare. I mean, that doesn't typically refer to bloodshed. It's just another type of competition, basically. It's a no holds barred competition, I think, when you're invoking warfare, right? It's like, there's not really, I mean, you could say there are rules to war, but there's not really, right? It's like technology and opportunity is basically, and physics are basically the rules. Like, what tools do you have? What opportunities do you have to exploit? And what do physics allow you to do, basically? And cyberspace is like another one of these spaces. It's interesting to me too that, you know, I bet when we were just on land, we obviously knew that, okay, at some point we're going to the sea. I think when we were at sea, some people didn't even think we'd go to the air, as the quote proves that we've mentioned earlier. We probably really never thought we were going to space, right? Like even where, once we're at land, seeing air, like, all right, we're done here. This is all the domains that we'd possibly be fighting war in. And then sure enough, we get into outer space, which is mind blowing. And surely then we thought we were done, right? Like, okay, we're literally in the cosmos, right? This is the, the end of the road, folks, and here we are. There's another domain. It's different, right? It's abstract, but it's so important, right? Like almost the entirety of the world's infrastructure now is integrated to cyberspace. It's, I think, regarded as like the number one threat from foreign actors in this country, right? It would be a cyber attack or cyber warfare. Again, there's that term again, cyber warfare. Bitcoin custody is evolving. Both self custody and single third party custody come with significant risk and trade offs. Onramp is pioneering a new standard, multi institution custody, which eliminates single points of failure, adding fault tolerance and redundancy to your setup. Onramp secures your Bitcoin in a segregated cold storage multi key vault guarded by three independent institutional grade custodians, none of which have unilateral control over your keys. Your funds are fully auditable on chain, cannot be rehypothecated and can only move or be withdrawn at your explicit direction. Multi institution custody removes the technical, mental and physical burdens of private key management, providing unparalleled peace of mind for you and your loved ones. Bitcoin is money and as the price continues to appreciate, Onramp helps you seamlessly tap into financial services like trading, inheritance, insurance, loans, IRAs and more, all without compromising on security or accessibility. Schedule a consultation with the Onramp team to learn more at onrampbitcoin.com/breedlove. Again, that's onrampbitcoin.com/breedlove. As one of my business mentors once told me, the job of the boss is to eliminate confusion. The best antidote for confusion is access to truth, which brings clarity to business decision making and thus optimizes the drive toward future business goals. Over 41,000 businesses have future proofed their business with NetSuite by Oracle, the number one cloud ERP system, which brings accounting, financial management, inventory, HR into one fluid platform. With one unified business management suite, there's one source of truth, giving you the visibility and control you need to make decisions quickly and effectively. If I was still a CFO, NetSuite is undoubtedly the ERP system I would use in my business. Whether your company is earning millions or even hundreds of millions, NetSuite helps you respond to immediate challenges and seize your biggest opportunities. Speaking of opportunity, you can download the CFO's Guide to AI and Machine Learning at netsuite.com/whatismoney. This guide is packed with useful insights and is free for you at netsuite.com/whatismoney. Again, that's netsuite.com/whatismoney. There's, there's a diagram. This is in, it's a diagram relating to software thesis and he explains, that explains how Bitcoin adoption reduces the profitability of kinetic warfare. This is, it's in the outline. I don't know what page it is in the book here. If you go down a little bit.
Okay, yeah, there it is, for sure.
So can we just look at this? I think this is one of his better diagrams. And can we explain what's going on here? Obviously, the top, he's identifying that these are assets that carry a monetary premium that we defend with human lives. And now what he means by that, as I understand it, is, well, when you're printing money, the money doesn't function as, doesn't function to store purchasing power over time or as a store of value, as people typically call it. Therefore, people being rational, they start to sell the currency and buy something that is not counterfeited in that way. So something that does store purchasing power across time, things like real estate, commodities, equities. And they're defended with human lives, military and rule of law. So how does he contrast that to Bitcoin? He shows all of these things collapsing into Bitcoin. What does this diagram mean?
So if I were to lean on my experience in lending, one of the things that pushed me towards understanding Bitcoin was all of the subsidies that came out during 2020 as a result of COVID, the pandemic. We saw real estate values for agriculture jump 30 to 40% in six months. And what everybody thought was, oh, you know, there's the saying in agriculture that, that if you own dirt, you can't get hurt, right? You can always recapitalize, you can, you can always borrow against your dirt because they ain't making any more of it, right? And so it, it pays to, it pays to own that. But my previous career as a financial advisor taught me cash is trash. Cash is trash because the longer you hold it, the less you can buy with it. And so what do you do is you put it into these monetized assets, land, real estate, gold, oil, equities, and they have two things in common. One is that they can be manipulated, all of them, and they have been over time to incredible degrees. Like we just saw over the last eight months, the dumping of our strategic petroleum reserve in order to slightly depress the cost of gasoline so that the woke could have a fighting chance of getting some votes and have opened ourselves up to a great threat by, by doing that. But the other thing that they have in common is that they can be seized, they can be taken. And so what is Jason, I forget his last name, but hard money you can't fuck with, right? We cross that line and that's the difference is that you cannot take that orange thing. You cannot take that away. You can't manipulate it. You can't do anything to it. But I can go to the housing market and if I really want to destroy the value of the housing market, all I have to do is put a 80% death tax on a, on a home. All I have to do is do to homeowners what the Russians did to farmers with the kulaks. And, you know, taking, declaring them a oppressive class simply because they owned something that had risen in such great value relative to the fiat that surrounded it. I guess that, that's kind of my take on it from, from where I came from.
Yeah. I, I agree that, that they can't be seized. These all have a physical substrate. They exist in the realm of mass. And so the insight, one of the insights at the beginning of the book, one of the inspirations is mass equals energy. Einstein, of course, has his equation. Lowry mentions it at the beginning. If you can swap energy for mass, then, you know, then the world of mass is where you get bodies on the ground and explosions and death and dying. In the world of energy, things can become abstract and yet still provably real through the expenditure of energy. And so I, I think that that's what that line indicates above, they depend on some sort of thing in the real world. Whereas Bitcoin, the, its presence, its footprint in the real world is decentralized. Yeah. So you can't just stamp it out and go to one place to seize it. So I think that that's what this gets.
I think that's a great foundational viewpoint on it, is that those things ultimately have mass and Bitcoin is massless. And that's why he writes in there that the mass based assets, the chain of custody of these assets is written in blood, right? Military and rule of law, whereas Bitcoin is defended with electricity and code. And then his concluding remark is that not having to waste human life to defend monetized wealth is worth every watt, right? It is just the most efficient and peaceful means of preserving wealth over time, right? And it creates incentives. We mentioned that it's, you know, highly concealable, hyper portable. This creates incentives for cooperation and trade rather than coercion and exploitation where, you know, real estate would be a painful opposite, right? It's not concealable at all. It's not portable at all. And what is most of human history characterized by is people fighting over land, right? Literally invading other people to take land. So Bitcoin's like an inversion of the paradigm in a way. And again, maybe that's why it's, it's technologically sophisticated, but it's also ideologically just groundbreaking. Like we, like if you were talking about this 30 years ago, like massless wealth that's secured by a global electricity network. It's like, people are like, what the fuck are you talking about? How could that possibly ever be a thing? But actually, you know what? You did bring up Henry Ford.
Yeah.
And was it, was it?
1921.
Edison, who else?
Tesla.
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 Maybe we should, actually, there were people thinking about this.
Right. Yeah. To, to kind of break into the, that idea and to go back even further. This is a concept that I learned from Lynn Alden's book, Broken Money, was that we have really been searching for an electric currency ever since we created the telegraph. Because when we created the telegraph, our ability to do business outran our ability to settle business.
Communications outran our ability to, to move money.
Exactly. Right. Yeah. Cause you said you had to physically move that.
We could only move promises. We couldn't move money.
Yeah. So I think there's this, there's this mishelled belief in the Bitcoin community and maybe the, the internet community writ large, which is that we've been searching for a, that was a whistle. We've been searching for an internet money since we created the internet. But in truth, we have been searching for a electric money since we created electric communications, which greatly predates. And Tesla and Henry Ford in the same epoch, Tesla in 1900, Henry Ford in 1921, they separately had ideas. Tesla had the idea that in the future, we would have energy competitions using electricity between intelligent machines with human out of the loop. He theorized and prophesized non lethal warfare. And at the same time, 20, 21 years later, Henry Ford, having become convinced that gold causes war because gold, due to the characteristics that it has, must be centralized because it is so value dense, once you believe in it as money, that you cannot simply carry it around. It has to be pushed together.
Lacks portability.
Yeah, exactly. Lacks portability. This, by the way, is the thing that I learned from you that took me down this path, which is, you know, the characteristics of money. And in 1921, Henry Ford buys a dam in the state of, I believe, Georgia for $30 million, intending to use it to create hydroelectric power and to use that electric power to power a currency that would replace gold and end war. And this is such a common theme among Bitcoiners, is that if you take money printing out of the hands of government, we cannot have these forever wars. I mean, there is the great argument that we have been in continuous war since the Fed was created. You know, like a year to the day after the Fed was created, we enter World War I on some fairly auspicious grounds. You know, the blowing up of the Lusitania after all of these people had advocated against getting on that ship because they were aware that there was a plot in order to, in order to blow it up. So another thing that Ford envisioned, and he got this right, was that not only did the currency have to be electric, it had to be limited. And so what do we have with Bitcoin? We have hashing machines battling it out in cyberspace, human out of the loop, no people, no bodies on the ground, no blood, a limited currency powered by electricity. And, you know, you can have your own, you can have your own thoughts and you can have your own justifications. But man, if you're going to get behind and hitch your wagon to a couple of people that have good ideas, Ford and Tesla, that's not a bad path to follow, right?
Indeed.
It's a good jumping off point, right? So.
No, it's well said. Anything to add to that?
No, I don't. It is like Tesla and Henry Ford as antecedent theorizers to Lowry. That shows you the depth of his thesis and like the historical precedent.
For sure, for sure. And yeah, I was saying how difficult it would be to ever formulate this prior to Bitcoin's emergence. But indeed, there were very deep, intelligent thinkers that come before us and they were thinking about it, man.
It gives credence to Lowry, right? He's not the first guy to wave this flag.
Of course.
Right?
Yeah. And it also, there's like this sort of just idiosyncratic thing that we're dealing with, right? It's like, gold is just not portable, basically, which is, it's like such an obscure kind of esoteric thing. Like, what do you mean this like lack of a monetary property is the reason we have raging warfare and centralized power structures like, but I've kind of, I really believe. and centralized power structures like, but I've kind of, I really believe it, you know, it's like to scale this thing as a globally transactable currency, we need to put it all in one place and put a derivative on top of it called a banknote. Well, once you put all that purchasing power in one place, power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely. A lot of people hate that quote, but you put all the, it's a honeypot basically, right? So now the institutions that grow up around that, well, surprise, surprise, they're extremely corrupt because they have a lot of power. You have to trust them a lot, right? It's not zero trust, permissionless, egalitarian. It's the exact opposite. It's high trust. It's inegalitarian and it's heavily permissioned, right? They'll kick you off the SWIFT network whenever they want or whatever the thing may be, or they'll print as much money as they want. And so what do we get? We get the lifeblood of the global economy is pathologized. And every institution, every individual, which is every institution and every individual that uses money, gets sick as a result. And so that's like, that's this money, what is money question? Like it gets, it becomes spiritual at some point. And but, so it sounds woo woo spiritual, but it's really rooted, I think, in just, just this technical, technical flaw. There's glitch in money, which is that we just had gold that's not portable. If we somehow had gold that was super light and highly transactable across space, we may not have any of these problems, which is crazy to think about.
When we create justifications around that, I have this, I, I took a quote from Marcus Aurelius, which is there is no good nor bad, but thinking makes it so. And apply that to Gresham's Law. And Gresham's Law is that bad money pushes out good, but let's just get rid of good and bad. And let's simply say that money that does not satisfy all the characteristics of money that allow it to fulfill the purposes of money, it needs an alternative in order to fulfill those. Like fiat was a very envisionable result of gold because of its lack of portability.
Yes.
And so this, again, this takes me to where I kind of think of the future, which is I do not see a, there are so many people right now that are envisioning a future where fiat and Bitcoin live side by side. And I don't see that because there is no reason to have fiat if you have a money that satisfies the when I first heard you talk about it, it was five characteristics of money, but you can extrapolate, you know, there's more like ten or eight or nine, right?
Like it depends how you chop it up. Yeah.
Doesn't matter. It's on top of the podium, getting the gold prize for every single one of those, right? So this is the ultimate warrior, right?
Other than like track record, because it's new, right? It's like, okay, it's young. That's basically the only drawback. But from a technical standpoint, it outperforms everything, big time. Okay, so let's shift gears a little bit here then. We've got Trump coming into office in a few days. There's a lot of talk of the US establishing Bitcoin as a national, a national strategic reserve of Bitcoin. So the US government is going to start stockpiling Bitcoin. I mean, Bitcoiners have been talking about this for a long time. You know, I know when I first got into it, just was laughed at by people that are, you know, traditional finance, quote unquote, smart money, like literally laughed at in my face with the thought that, you know, I would say, oh, well, due to game theory, governments will eventually realize they have to adopt this thing. Central banks will adopt this thing, even if they existentially, even if they philosophically despise it, you have to acquire some because it's an existential threat to your business, right? So you have to buy some of it as a hedge. And this was basically the argument we've been making, we as a Bitcoiners between, since two thousand, well, I got involved in sixteen, seventeen. People probably been making it before that, but like that was the course of action we saw it taking due to game theory. Laughed at hysterically. Here we are, eight years later, nine years later. Wow. Nine years later. And it's happening. It's happening in the, the global superpower, the United States. So what are we to think about the game theory playing out around nation state Bitcoin adoption? Is this, is this the tipping point? Where are we in this game?
Grant, what do you? Yeah. I was trying to, I, I think that Lowry, so he, he has been sounding the horn or beating the drum or whatever a long time for this strategic reserve. And he does think that if it's not us, then you fall behind absolutely in this asymmetric contest that is acquiring Bitcoin, a scarce, the only scarce resource.
It's like the adoption of gunpowder, right?
Yeah.
You, you don't adopt it, you're going to get invaded by someone that did adopt it, kind of thing.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, and it goes to the notion that Bitcoin is bit power, that the proof of work protocol is what makes Bitcoin valuable, but the, the coins themselves, which Lowry calls bit power, these are physically, it was physically costly to create them and it's physically costly to transmit them. So they have this unique property in cyberspace. So accumulating Bitcoin, even though his thesis is kind of mostly about proof of work, the reusable proof of work creation, the coin, the stamp, the receipt, that has value because Lowry, he gives the, the computer science analogy of the strangler vine pattern where a new computer system will not often just entirely replace the old one in one swift go. It will slowly leach functionality from the legacy system. And so we can look at Bitcoin in that way. It's kind of right now leeching the financial functionality from the internet. But Lowry thinks more and more functionality is going to be leached from the internet. Bitcoin as bit power, these coins that are created, they're going to be used for other things in the future, such as to they're provably costly. So you can use them to collateralize information that you want to get through to somebody else that they know you're sending a real world signal and not some sort of spam attack. So I think part of the value of the strategic reserve from Lowry's perspective is not just that these things are scarce, they're going to appreciate monetary value. We want to win the financial war or whatever it is, which is important too. But also this could replace the architecture of the internet. And so having these Bitcoins or bit power, these things could have functionality and indeed for secure, if the military secures a thoroughfare, then bit power could secure the thoroughfare of cyberspace. And through this paywall type functionality. And so we need to get it for that reason, for military purposes. And I think that type of argument is powerful because other people make the argument that, well, you know, we have a gold reserve, but the gold doesn't back the dollar and the Bitcoin doesn't back, it won't back the dollar either. So why do we need this? And is it just an attack on the dollar? And you can say, no, there is, if we understand that it's bit power, if we take seriously what Lowry is saying, there is this other function that a strategic reserve could have to preserve our access, our future access to the thoroughfare of cyberspace once it has become hyper Bitcoinized or Bitcoinized.
Yeah. So, yeah, as there are more applications making use of the security functionality that Bitcoin imparts to internet applications, well, you'll need more and more Bitcoin, right? As there's more and more volume of activity occurring inside of these software applications. So it's really, I mean, it becomes, it's a land grab, right? It's like you need to get as much of this territory as possible. You don't know, right? Like when you're taking land in Manhattan, you don't know that it's going to be skyscrapers two hundred years in the future. And, you know, the financial center of the world, you don't really know that, but you know that there's a very small piece of land that has good C X S and it's strong bedrock and like whatever the features are that make it attractive. And you just need to get as much of that as you possibly can, right? To, to preserve your interests, basically. One of my highest health priorities is keeping my brain in top shape. To take care of my brain power, I do many things such as striving to read, write, exercise and meditate daily. One of the latest tools in my brain power toolkit is Mind Lab Pro. Mind Lab Pro is a nootropic supplement that is scientifically proven to enhance your brain power. When I take Mind Lab Pro, my mind feels like it has a better grip on the world. My thinking is more lucid and the articulation of my speech is radically improved. Mind Lab Pro has been tested in rigorous, double-blind placebo-controlled human trials and has been proven to enhance brain power for users in every age group. Mind Lab Pro is an advanced formulation of eleven nootropic ingredients and is backed by research from over fourteen hundred human trials conducted over the past thirty-two years. So if you're looking to enhance your brain power, Mind Lab Pro is an excellent solution. Go to mindlabpro.com/breedlove to start enhancing your brain power today. Again, that's mindlabpro.com/breedlove. Knowing when to buy Bitcoin can feel complicated and knowing how much to buy can be overwhelming and getting started can be a headache, but it doesn't have to be. That's exactly why I recommend Coinbits because it solves these major blockers and it's the easiest way to buy Bitcoin. With Coinbits Roundups feature, you can automatically convert your spare change into Bitcoin while you shop. For example, when you buy a coffee for three dollars and fifty cents, the extra fifty cents is rounded up and it goes straight into Bitcoin. Here's why that's a huge win for you, because you don't have to be a tech wizard or try to time the market just right with Bitcoin. With Coinbits Roundups, you simply set it, shop and stack sats. And you can set this up in under two minutes. Just visit the website, connect your card and boom, you're buying a little Bitcoin every time you spend money. So stop wasting your time with complicated exchanges or confusing shitcoin apps. Coinbits simplifies your Bitcoin savings strategy. So go to coinbits.app/breedlove. Again, that's coin, B I T S, dot app slash breed love. Do you think this is the tipping point? Like, do you think that the United, if, let's assume that the United States does go through with this, it's not certain yet, that they do start to stockpile Bitcoin as a strategic reserve asset? Do you think that is the tipping point for broader nation state adoption?
What do you think, Lucas? I do. I absolutely do because we're seeing it in other countries right now that a sailor would say they have a need to know and they have a need to know because they have suffered under the tyranny of the dollar for so long that they are open to new ideas. And I, I did not originally, I mean, when you first learn about Bitcoin, you understand Bitcoin through the lens of the dollar. And what that makes you immediately want to do is oil your guns and stock up on ammunition because we're going to war. Like I, you, you have, I mean, I had this burning fervent anger towards the oppressors. And it took a systems engineer approach to back that off and to understand that evil is not necessarily inherent within the people who run the system. It is the system that creates the evil that James Clear and Atobek Habits says that, you know, we don't rise to the level of our goals, we fall to the level of our systems. And I've, I've never seen anyone consistently maintain good habits in a bad environment.
Right.
And so it is perfectly explainable how this happened. And that left me at this crossroads where I really was not too excited about my government, which had been so oppressive and tyrannical, owning the thing that gives so much power. And I got to credit Jason Lowry for bringing me around on this because when I asked him about this, he said, who do you want to have it? You know, war is not like you, you don't see communist countries fighting each other. You don't see capitalist countries fighting each other. War is always a battle between ideologies. And so do I want my ideology, which started out to be, it started out in a good way. Do I want that to persist or do I want something else? Okay. So that brought me around. But then to the point of, is it time for the United States to step aside, to abandon the dollar, to recognize the sunk cost fallacy? Then two things I would say about that is when Google tried, when Google realized that they could not compete with Apple for the iOS ecosystem, what'd they do? They bought Android and they open sourced it. And they, they weren't in that dominant position. But now eighty percent of the world runs on Android as a result, right? The other thing is, this is how I try to explain to myself what Michael Saylor is doing with MicroStrategy, which is that I liken it to Blockbuster, Blockbuster and Netflix. Everybody knows this story. Everybody knows that Netflix went to Blockbuster and said, hey, we have this new thing. And Blockbuster said pound sand. And then two years later, the only thing that's left is one of the funniest accounts on X, which is the last Blockbuster, which is a great follow. And, and they're just completely gone. But the, the second part of that story is never told. The second part of that story is that Netflix creates this new domain, which is digital video. And they own that. They own that entire market for a very small time. And from the second that they take over that market, they lose peak market share and they continue to lose peak market share. Amazon comes in, Disney Plus, Hulu, ESPN, et cetera. And they just continue to take market share because that is a pie and new interest into that, into that pie, take pieces of it. That pie doesn't grow. The difference with Bitcoin is that, and, and Sailor's strategy is that if you adopt his strategy and copy it and do the exact same thing, then you help him. If you don't adopt his strategy and you don't copy it and you stay out of it, you help him. It doesn't matter. It wins both ways and the difference is the digital scarcity that's enforced by proof of work and the timestamp and the hash. We're able to have the pie that is no longer, it's no longer me taking from you. It's no longer us competing for market share. That pie grows. And, and so that's, you know, I, I'm really excited about what happens in the future because it aligns incentives for the first time. It gives the money back to the people so that when the government wants it, they have to do something worth getting paid.
Right.
Right?
They have to render a useful, valuable service at a consensual price point, right?
Market for government now.
Yes. Yeah. It pushes centralized government into a free market style competition. And I think it's an excellent point you bring up, like the neutrality of a global digital non-state sound money is probably the most brilliant alignment of incentives we've ever had, right? Because finally you have the rules without rulers, so to speak. And then every business that's successful in bringing a product or service to market that solves problems for consumers better, faster, cheaper, everyone worldwide, I don't need to know any of them, increases the purchasing power of my money. So you're now aligned with everyone in a way, like even if you're competing with them directly, like obviously if you're Blockbuster versus Netflix, you want to prevail, right? You want to win. But even if you don't, and they brought something to market that's radically increasing productivity or, you know, solving problems better, faster, cheaper. If you've got Bitcoin on the balance sheet, you still win, even if you go out of business. So there's this very potent alignment of incentives between all market actors, from individuals to businesses to nation states, that I, I do think is under appreciated. And we don't know, like it's an unknown. We've never had, like you could look at the gold standard as like, and again, gold has all these problems with it being an invitation to violence and whatnot. But the glimmers of the gold standard and the alignment we had is probably the closest thing we've had to that, to this bright orange future that we're speculating about. But I, I really believe it's underappreciated. Like, what do you do when consumer preference becomes sovereign in the world? And it's no longer about might makes right, or it's, it's less about might makes right. I guess you're still going to have that physical backstopping of violence is somewhere in the background. But when it doesn't pay and it's not profitable, people just aren't going to engage in it as much. It's just going to be more profitable to do things people value, right?
Yeah. Lowry refers to this as the infinitely prosperous organism that within an evolutionary framework with Bitcoin, we've reached the point, usually an organism, once it has a certain amount of resources accumulated, that's its prosperity margin. It has to scale up its cost of attack or it's going to be devoured, consumed by predators. So Bitcoin is the first instance where that prosperity margin scales along with the cost of attack. It's up and to the right together. And so it is unprecedented and a new evolutionary strategy, technology that allows infinite prosperous scaling cooperatively, competitively.
Yeah. The rough metaphor I've used in the past is like, imagine if you had a safe and the more money you put in the safe, like the bigger and harder to crack that safe became, that's basically what Bitcoin is, right? The more purchasing power is stored on the network, the more secure the network becomes.
That's crazy. Yeah. And the more attempts to brute force that safe, the stronger it gets.
Yeah, it's anti-fragile.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Gabriel's horn.
Oh yeah, that's a pretty wild analogy in there.
Bringing it back to the thesis, which is the Gabriel's horn is the more you put into it, like it, you can't envision, you can't understand it, but the way that I think about it is, have you ever heard the quote, as the island of my knowledge grows, so do the shores of my ignorance?
No, that's a good one though.
So you can take the mathematical concept away from this, which is that think about a circle and if you double the radius, then you, you increase the shoreline by a greater magnitude than you increase the surface area. And so this has always been the struggle of, of dynasties is that they continue to scale, they continue to expand, but by But by doing so, they increase the border, they increase the amount that they have to protect until it reaches a point where it's no longer cost.
They get overextended.
Yeah, they get over, and then they collapse, right? And you're exactly right, the safe, the, the ever-expanding safe is exactly the Gabriel's horn concept, which is that you can continue to put power into this. This takes us into Carteshev level one, this moves us to that point where we can, we can harness the entire energy of the world and put it into this and we, and we want to.
Yes, yeah, no, it's beautiful, it's, it's on the screen here. So it's a mathematical construct, right? And, um, supply volume stays fixed. It's, I can't read this, it's area can expand to any price and power level. So I'm trying to recall here that, um, it can have infinite volume with a finite surface area, is that what it is?
Correct.
I could be wrong with that.
Oh wait, hold on, so.
Surface area of each segment expands with price and power level, okay?
So you're pulling it out and it's stretching like taffy. And so each surface segment is expanding with price and power and each surface segment there is supposed, it can represent a Bitcoin. So like each Bitcoin, if Bitcoin is real estate, the, the value or expanse of those Bitcoins, the amount of power they represent is growing.
So basically the purchasing power that can be contained by each Bitcoin is limitless, although the Bitcoin supply is perfectly fixed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, and by the other thing, I brought this to his attention. This is the same visual metaphor that Einstein used to describe a black hole. Like we often call Bitcoin the economic singularity.
Yep.
It's this, literally this, it breaks the laws of physics, just like Bitcoin breaks, uh, I guess our preconceived notions of economics, our preconceived notions of money. But yeah, Bitcoin is an economic singularity and it's, I don't know where the event horizon is, but it feels like we are close.
Yeah, that's cool.
It really does. And you know, they talk about, um, in the actuality, if you were, say, falling backwards into a black hole, then I would see you falling backwards in real time. You know, you would just disappear, but you looking out, it would be an eternity, the way that time slows when it's in the black hole, right?
Yeah.
And so I tell you what, man, waiting for Bitcoin to take over, that's kind of what it feels like. Come on, man, been waiting here for days.
This is towards the end of the book, but yeah, I think it just, man, what a, what a brilliant job he did with this book. Like he goes through, you know, starting with the most basic physics and anthropology of animals and territoriality, all the way to Gabriel's horn, like an abstract mathematical concept. It, yeah, and you guys said this in your videos, it, although this is a, you know, master's level thesis written by an MIT Space Force guy, it reads kind of poetic, you know, like it's dense, but he's a really good writer. So I, it's hard to get a hold of, I guess the PDF is online, I'll try to link to it. But I think it's really, it's definitely worth checking out for people that are curious about this Bitcoin thing.
If I could say another thing, your conversations with Lowry are excellent. If you want to see a historical artifact like Clausewitz spitballing with somebody about military theory before he publishes On War, because Lowry is working on the thesis as he's talking with you and other podcasters. And so these are historical documents. I mean, if this software thesis, software thesis is correct, I mean, it's, it's incredibly like historically significant. And these are documents, you can go back and see the thinker working with other thinkers and piecing these. And you can see Lowry kind of having, responding to things, having epiphanies, putting it together in his mind, quoting Robert at the end of his book, the, he's drawing in all these ideas and it's a fascinating thing to watch. And I'm just so grateful to be able to go back and look at that as I read this, it's incredible.
Yeah, no, it's, it's truly interesting to be a participant in history, you know? And at some point in your life, you just, I don't know, I went from like just reading history and being like a passive spectator to all of a sudden you're like just participating in it. Not to say that I'm like some kind of historical figure or whatever, I think Lowry definitely could be, right? If this plays out, he's going to be one of the most significant and historical figures there ever was, right? He's, well, the guy that called the next epoch of military societal evolution. But it's, it's a lot of fun and I was, I felt very thrilled. It was in our last conversation, I think, he was describing Bitcoin as like the inversion of a microchip. And I just called it a macrochip and he was, so he lit up, he loved it and used that, I was like, huh. Whatever contribution I can make, you go and write the 600 word thesis, I'll give you the one word.
And at one point, he's overcome with emotion too, when he's talking to you. I don't know if you recall that, but that for me, that was really powerful, like.
I do recall that.
Yeah, you just see the sincerity at that point and see that he believes, like he is sounding the horn or whatever on this in a way that's just like, it's so important.
Yeah, yeah, it's from the heart, right? Because he cares about human life and stopping the needless destruction of human life to secure property if we can use some neutral, peaceful, bloodless protocol. Okay, I think we've gone the distance for the day. Is there maybe a closing quote or excerpt from the book we could leave people with?
You know, if I could close with one thing, I guess it would be to note the richness of the thesis again and say, you know, don't hesitate to dive into it and don't think if you dive into it, you're just going to get what you heard today. This is, there's so many great and rich concepts in here. And, um, one, one idea I wanted to maybe just leave, you know, just because it's something we didn't mention is humans as apex predators. This goes back to something you said, Robert, that power corrupts, absolute power corrupts absolutely. Well, Lowry tells an evolutionary story to show that, you know, that's corroborated in the sense that, and we're not to blame for that either, we are evolved to be predators, to be apex predators. Like that's the point that evolution has brought us to. And so to think that any sort of hierarchy operated by apex predators is going to look out for the people at the bottom of the hierarchy, you know, it's, it's just, it's not good or bad, it's just not in alignment with what evolution tells us about human nature. And so you can look at this in a very factual way and there's so many threads like that in this thesis that I just wholeheartedly recommend that people pick it up and read it. You're going to enrich your life some way beyond, ways beyond even understanding Bitcoin.
Yeah, I would say, I would say that, I was on Twitter the night that Jason Lowry first came onto Twitter. Uh, I was, uh, watching one of the, like, one of the very first video interview conferences, spaces, whatever that he did. And you were right in identifying that when he first came onto Twitter, especially having the call sign spook and being part of the government, that so many people attacked him for trying to promote warfare and being warlike, war mongering, hey, I just want to take this beautiful thing, Bitcoin, that's perfected money and I want to bring it under the purview of battle and fighting and death. And, and he was accused of that and he gets really quiet. And he sinks for a second and he doesn't respond. And he, he says, I'm a soldier, I want war less than any of you, right? He understands that, and this, you know, this really helped me, you know, again, we, we have such a, you need to have empathy for the warrior because the warrior suffers the battle because of that theory of mind, because of the ability to relate to death, having seen it. So, um, yeah, again, it's incredible what he's done. And no lack of credit goes towards sounding boards like the What Is Money Show, where he gets to have a muse and have a foil and, and parry and thrust back and forth in order to, uh, work out these ideas. And fingers crossed, he's supposedly working on a book that hopefully will be released that makes this even more palatable. So, uh, really look forward to that. And, and thank you, uh, by the way, so much for having us here.
Yeah, of course.
It's been a pleasure.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a beautiful place to bring it to a close. Thank you guys for joining me and shout out to Mr. Lowry for doing all the hard work that we just get to enjoy and share with everyone else. So, and we'll do this again tomorrow, we'll do, there's, again, there's a lot here. I don't know where we're going tomorrow, but if you're interested in this one, there's another one coming around the corner.
Sounds good.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for watching. If you enjoyed this episode, click here to find more, just like it, and here to find our most recent episode. Also, make sure to like this video to help shine light on the corruption of money. And be sure to subscribe to this channel to stay connected.